All the way.
Er, again.
There.
Frank.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Tika.
Here.
The stalker. Yeah, great.
Work. Number two, approval of agenda. Any changes, Your Honor? Uh, no change this evening. Motion to approve.
Second.
All the way.
Again.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Tika.
Yes.
Stalker. Yes, great.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A development presentation by Pioneer Property Management and I have Brian Fritz. The bell's gonna go.
Okay, so, uh, now, members, tonight we have Brian Fritz from Pioneer Property Management to make a presentation about possible development at Twenty Second Lynn. I know I've talked with some of you about this presentation over the last several months. And so we are ready to give a presentation tonight. This is a project that you'll be evaluating to look at that possibly go to Twenty Second and Lynn Street. That is the old detention on, uh, it well, still is. And, um, back in the nineties, there was some work done out there, done with a grant from the federal government, from the CDEG, in amount of $600,000. However, uh, we have done our research and asked Senator Corry to help us with that. And we have a letter from, uh, EP, I think CPA, that, do you remember? See, I can't, do you walk up? Okay, there it comes. From EPA that says they no longer have any claim on this property and then sold if council would so choose. And if you remember, last council meeting, we set a public hearing, uh, for February fifteenth to have a public hearing on the annexation of Twenty Second and Lynn. We own that, as you know, so it is a voluntary annexation. So Brian's here tonight, uh, to, uh, talk to you about this project. So Brian, I'm gonna turn it over to you and I'll, I'll put your power point up.
Good, thanks for having me. My name is Brian Fritz. I'm your, uh, owner of Pioneer Property Management, one of the developers for Iceberg Development Group. Uh, we are based in the Midwest. Uh, I'm from Platteau, Wisconsin. My partner is from West Des Moines, Iowa, originally from Grundy Center, Iowa. Uh, we are the owners and developers of the Alice Place Boom Project from a few years ago. Uh, obviously, we are very excited about the city of Boom, all that you guys have done. Um, not only in the past, are more than happy to be a part of it and, and would love to, again, um, do additional housing in, in town, which I believe is sorely needed. And we'll talk about that a little bit through the presentation. But, uh, again, I just wanted to take your moment, take a moment to say, uh, how happy we are to be here and, and be able to have this conversation. We, uh, currently own and operate about a set of changes, and I apologize if it's different from before, about ninety buildings, it's, uh, roughly five thousand units in eight different states. Our core business is, uh, the Midwest, where, where we come from, Wisconsin, Iowa, Illinois. Do everything as small as an eight-minute building, um, all the way to Asian place communities at a couple hundred units, so, a little bit. These are the type of communities and, uh, buildings we enjoy doing. I think it makes the most amount of impact. And again, I live in a community not that different than Boom, and I can, uh, I, I just enjoy what we're able to do for the residents and, uh, and how we're able to become entrenched part of the community. We'll do a brief overview of the site. Um, feel free to ask questions. Uh, I'll keep it brief from there and obviously want to answer anything we have. This would be two separate projects. Uh, as I pointed out before, there are some baked pine trees that run down the middle of the site currently. That would be the barrier, um, which would be eventually, um, two sites, two specific sites, uh, so we have from a funding standpoint. That is also where the, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that is where the pipe runs currently from the detention that was put in prior, right?
Yeah. Correct me. There is one there, and I have a graph back and put on the screen, which I've done with your presentation.
So, so that's the way it currently lays. This is a best guess between, um, city staff and, and my architect and myself, um, me being the least educated in that field. But to get to where we believe that is, and obviously that's one of the parts that we will be zeroing down and making sure that there is, uh, no adverse effect with that there, and we're able still to do what we are able to do. Uh, the, there is the detention at the end. One of the things you see coming off of that, it looks like it's a dark barrier and around it is a walking path. Um, one of the things that we really want to strive for here is, is to build a neighborhood, um, a, a multi-age, multi-income, um, community that's there on, on the outside and have a little bit for everyone and make sure people are able to get out and about and everything else. And I'll show you a video here, Bill, a little shortly, of something similar that has been done. So the first part is a family project. It is approximately a nine million dollar project as it stands. It's thirteen total buildings, forty total units. It's a mix of two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom units. Uh, they range from the smallest size, low-density would be duplexes, those would be the four-bedroom units. Uh, the three-bedroom units would fall in an eight-plex building, which we'll see pictures of prior. And then there is a three-plex building that would house the two-bedroom units. These are all based on buildings and projects we have done, um, in the past. And at that point, the closest one is Knoxville, Iowa, of, of a family project that we did that would have this, um, mix and similar to it. If we go down, the next would be the elderly project. That would be the southeast quadrant. Each will have their own community building, um, own separate spaces, amenities for, for the sites that would, that would be specific to, to that project. One project being the family, other being the elderly. The elderly is thirty additional units. Uh, there'd be ten one-bedroom, twenty-two bedroom. As I stated how we got to this number, um, this is about what I feel currently, um, give or take a few units, is what the market would be, could, could bear, um, without, one, us starting to hurt our current project and also, um, the other local units in town where it becomes a saturation effect of what we look in. And that's what we've driven from market studies and, and what we have from there. In our Alice Place project, we also, we have a very sizable waitlist right now, um, and that's how the unit mix kind of breaks down of, of what we see. So it is our, it is a guess, but it's our best guess, and, um, I think it's pretty accurate of, of what we think, um, currently we could be successful with. These are some depictions of some projects, they're in, obviously, exact replicas, but it gives you an idea of what we look at. The one in the middle to the right there is a duplex unit that is currently in the Knoxville, Iowa, project that I talked about. First time we did this building, and that's on the left, um, was in Gulfport, Mississippi, with, uh, credits that were, um, driven from Hurricane Katrina. Uh, there's also multiple projects, uh, one we'll see in a suburb of Chicago. You know, I think they're nice, they're very nice units, uh, they get the job done, people really seem to enjoy them, and, and we're able to, uh, make sure we can deliver on, on what we talked about. The triplex buildings, as you can see, there, there's some, again, some photos of some similar type projects, gives an idea of some color palette, some, some stone. The one on the top right is an older project, but give an idea here, you know, what we try to do is design a specific space. They all have their own exterior doors, allows for the resident to have their own typical home, a little bit different than, um, the higher-density buildings like Alice Place, where there, there's a lot of community space. Um, we, we see it, you know, there are individuals, especially seniors, we see a lot of people that are still working and are active, don't necessarily want to care for their own home, own their own many longer, but still want to, um, still have their private space and anything else. So it's a, it's a good mix and transition. It's just some additional photos. Uh, the one on the left is a, is a, a newer project in Muscatina that we built that is the, the three-plex units, that gives an idea of some of the color palette, some of the things, what a kitchen would look like, flooring looks like, obviously, there's a bathroom there. These are the eight-plex and the family units. These are the three-bedroom units. Uh, this allows us to hit on a different price point. It also allows us to, within the program-defined rules, allows us to do some of those duplex lower-density units that you don't normally see in, in projects like we discussed. Um, this kind of hits on all marks. Like I said, we, you know, we try to do some things to differentiate. They all have their own exterior doors, they're spaced out, there's two ways to get, there's a breezeway, so that way there's not a confrontation of traffic. We do our, we do our best to have some thought behind it. So again, gives you an idea of some of the inside of the units. The one on the left is, is one of the newer projects we did with this style of building. The video he's going to play right now is a, uh, mixed-age community. This is actually very similar to what we're looking at here. This is in East Unby, Illinois, suburb of Chicago. Um, we did, uh, concurrent projects just like this. One is an elderly project, one is a family project, but at the same time, we're fortunate enough to be able to move forward on both of them. Uh, this is a much larger project than what we're looking at, but I think it, it gives a nice, um, idea of, of the thought that goes on and how we will try to turn it into a neighborhood. You know, I use that word a lot, but, uh, you know, we want to make sure that, that we have that, and we're, we're good members of the community and, and it's something that everybody can be proud of. Maybe we'll get to see that.
It worked in the ED.
It did work, it did work. Start from the beginning, maybe he'll give you some time. This was done, oh, I don't know, I'm trying to remember, probably about seven years ago. I'm good. It, it's not that unfamiliar. This is an Alice Place project, that we did in that area. Uh, I think it's loading, and if people have questions, I can answer questions while we wait also.
Is this similar to what you did in Waki?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, that's a great example. So that, the Waki one is a little bit different because of Pickman that runs down. But yes, it's a different time, but the same concept of, of multi-age community go together. There, we actually see a lot, a little bit, you know, larger area. We have a lot of grandma lives across the street, grandkids, it, it works out really well.
It's really a nice fire station.
It, they. They were there first.
Brian, something you talked about in the ED meeting was the timeline.
Yep, so the timeline for this, we, part of our funding process is, is through the state, so they tell us, um, when we are able to submit those applications. I think most of you, uh, went through this with us once before. But it is April fourteenth, as it currently stands, is when we have to have our entire package together, everything else. From a standpoint of, of if everything goes as planned, um, we would apply April fourteenth, we would find out end of summer whether or not we were successful. And, and as I said, it's a moving target, and I even hate giving that now, with, uh, with the new world we live in, because you never know. But, you know, my hope would be beginning of two thousand twenty-two, as long as Mother Nature allows us, we, we would be moving dirt and, and starting paths and, and get going.
So up on the screen now is the Greenwich style that we talked about. Uh, this is in Greenwich District, so this is the tile. Uh, this has been sent to Brian, and his people, they know it's there, they know they have to work around it. And, uh, so that's where it is on the property. And there's also a zinnia water line there that's on the south part of it, just out of the right of way, right here. So it runs from up north, comes along Twenty Second Street, crosses Key Avenue, and the water line is on the east side of Key Avenue, not on, on our property here. But this water line does. And we haven't agreed with Zinnia on that, but Jim reviewed that, and there are no issues with Zinnia and that water line there, just data available.
Yeah, and that's, and that's one of the things, just so everybody is aware, you know, the process, it's one of those things. We, we want as much information as we can to make sure that there's no big red flags that pop up and stop, but, you know, as we progress through, and I, I always say, I know a little bit about a lot of things, engineering, I, I know nothing. Um, they like to keep me out of those, so I forward the information along, we talk about it, and there has been no red flags. There's, there's nothing, everybody understands there are, this is not just a piece of dirt that you can stick a shovel in, uh, but there's nothing that has raised any, any red flag or anything that, that don't believe that we can't figure out, um, and work through. So thank you for sharing all the information that you have, and, and pleasantly, you know, we found so far everything looks good.
So this is the water sewer map of the area, this would be south of Twenty Second Street. This is well, just shared with Brian and his people. And, uh, staff has looked at it, uh, they have, I think there are some, uh, hurdles, but nothing that is doing anything to the project. So it's important that we make sure they know everything about our system. Some of our sewers aren't very, very deep, it was just the way it was done years and years ago, uh, and that was shared from as well, but they're aware of everything.
And, and, and that's what'll happen. We're, we're at this point waiting for an abstract to be completed on the project, so that way we are able to start, um, doing survey work and things like that. That's what we need to get the ball rolling, as soon as we have that, and then that is when, um, my engineering staff will really get in. And I, I've just kind of been saying, any problems, any problem, no, not so far, we'll know when we get into it, but that's when we'll start to see that stuff. Um, and there's, we're not, like, like, uh, Bill said, same Andrew said, it, it, we do not anticipate any, any problems, work, right? But, but nothing that stops us in our tracks.
Brian, one other thing.
Yeah.
Not sure we talked about it, uh, with full capital, with the clubhouse that was located.
Yep, so each, so each project, this would be two separate projects, they both have their own individual clubhouse and amenity space. Um, so the elderly project will have, um, very, very similar to what we see in Alice Place, if everybody's had a chance to tour that building and been inside of it, there'll be a fitness area, a library, a community area, um, you know, a limited kitchen for, for holiday parties and, and people to rent out. Family project is, is not that different, maybe a few extra computer, you know, computer lab, a little bit more room for the kids, a, a gaming area, stuff like that where, where we have people that are able to come in. But they are two separate buildings themselves, and, and we do try to provide that community space to them.
And we talked, uh, this would be a private development, however, uh, Brian will grant, we talked about an easement for the community to use if they would like to utilize a walking path around the pond, uh, they would certainly create that.
Yep, and that's, that is, you know, one thing that I have said, is we've, we've tried that, I don't know if anybody had an example of what we've done, and, and I, I at some point, the way this works is I tell our attorneys and everything, this is our wishes, this is our city's wishes, don't screw this up for us. And then they go through all, all of that stuff. Um, and, and that's what we have. The last one where we've had a situation like this, if everybody's, if anybody's familiar with the Norwalk area, there is, when you come off, we're currently building a project, which is right next to the Arby's, there is a golf cart path that runs from the clubhouse all the way down to the local businesses. Um, we have granted an easement, um, to the city and the golf course community, that way they are able to get from the clubhouse to all of the local businesses. And a lot of times, we, we will try to do that, anything, and, and, and we have, and like I said, we're, you know, what the city is wants and what we want, because we want to be part of the community, we want to make sure it's, it happens, helps us from a marketability standpoint. Um, we, we try to cover those things, you know, as we get, if we're fortunate enough to be awarded, that's when we can start looking at these types of things.
Do these have basins?
Oh, basins, I'll worry.
So do you have a tornado shelter or something like that?
It, it would be a, the community building, or just not this similar to many other apartment communities, anything else that they have, or a home with office.
Well, I live up in that area, and I don't think my house is big enough to get all those people in.
And that is definitely your right to not let them all in. Um, we discussed this at ED, and we, uh, was, were unanimous for municipal council on our recommendation, so that's why it is before us today as well, so we can approve of Brian going forward with application process and going with the state, and then formalizing a final agreement as well. Motion, is there a motion? Motion, Mr. Russell. Call the roll.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Tika?
Yes.
Stalker? Yes, great.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Again.
Yes. Thank you, Brian, thank you, Brian. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll be impressed, Brian.
Okay, great. Have a good night, everyone. ED set a public hearing from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and consider setting a max levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, but. I can call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Tika?
Yes.
Stalker? Yes, great.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
City set a public hearing from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, six p.m., and considered the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two capital improvement plan.
Seven.
Second. All the roll.
Tika?
Yes.
Stalker? Yes, great.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Frank?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, number four, report the standing committees, policy administrator, EJ.
Northport.
Uh, public safety, Steven.
Northport.
It's always committee, Steven.
We'll be meeting next Monday at four thirty, p.m. This coming, I think? Next Monday. Well, we. And David will be here, so. I may be able to call in if you need me. Okay, uh, D, I don't know what, great.
Uh, just two items, Your Honor. One, Garfield Development Agreement with I Homes was an agenda item late earlier tonight with ED. Uh, our agreement dates back to late twenty nineteen, uh, due to weather and COVID and other cited issues, they've, uh, had an extension through September of last year, and they were not able to eat that, so we will kind of revisit it, uh, hopefully if, have a resolution at our ED meeting on the fifteenth. And ED will probably be bringing some of the full council's considerations at that time. I have a number two annexation, Bill.
Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna pass this, uh, the committee already has a copy, but I'll pass it, that is a NAPA of our comprehensive plan that was developed in two thousand five to two thousand thirty. If you remember, at goal-setting, our council discussed. Council discussed the pavement of South Marion and the Lysit Park. So as staff compares for that, uh, the subject came up of annexations in that area. In addition, Ed's office has received from the county notification of a land division of the property that is on the screen in red, that is just south of West Park Avenue, excuse me. So as we prepare for that, uh, road construction, if you look right on my arrow, is the payments starts, or will need to be done about right there, through the South Marion and then north. Um, this area here, like I said, on the land division, that has already been asked by the county and granted, we have not heard anything more from them on that, but we started discussing, uh, things that the city may want to do with the development in that area. If you remember, at, uh, goal-setting, that area was kind of identified as an area for development of single-family homes, and where the arrow is now, right here, I'll remind, uh, council and mayor that this is the land owned by the city. This here is owned by a private individual who I've had conversations with. Uh, you also asked me to look into the purchase of that land. Uh, I did make an offer, uh, that was, uh, approved by the ED, and it was rejected, so we have nothing at least so far. But we feel that this is an area that is important to the city, and it certainly can be developed, when we're talking about development in West Boone, particularly paving West Park and South Marion. If you look at the purple line here, this is the city limits now, so if you go here to the South Division and West Park, it goes to the west a little bit. So what it, it does not include is that house that is on the, would be the southwest corner of that intersection, and in addition to the north of that is a log cabin, very good-built log cabin, I might add, and, but that is not in the city. So what we have talked about is that this would continue this way, and, uh, and then the reason it goes south of this purple line here is because this is the area of the land division that they're talking about. So the, this area here would be annexed, this blue area right here, if you've been out there, you know, there's a tower there, so this is that parcel of land with that, that, uh, it's a radio tower, it, cell tower, right here. So this is the area, and so if you drive, uh, past West Park, south on South Marion, this area here is gravel as well. Remember this house here, this was the house that annexed in, this was the land swap when we purchased this fifteen acres. There's also been discussion in this area about a water tower. Uh, I think staff at this point has concluded that that, at this point, that is not necessary. There's a project that we are working on on South Main Street to put in some new water lines, updated water lines, and Jerry, you can explain it, do your roof painting, whatever that means.
We're gonna basically, um, Park Avenue, off on Tana Street, we can put in a new water main, which is larger. So what we do is we, we run the water main from, basically, West Park Avenue across the field, where we put the new horse main, this sewer's horse main, and loop up to the existing water main on Main Street. So we've moved the system, so we have more ways to feed that area.
Which takes away the need for the water tower. Okay. So, um, so we, like I said, we have our area, we have this, all by private, private individual, and then this as well, but we feel it's important that, at least for the elected officials, to consider annexing this, considering the probably one point five million, or a little more maybe, of what we're gonna spend out here for this road. Ed, Dan, have I left anything out here? So we brought it to the ED committee for consideration, uh, staff needs some direction from the elected officials, is that this is a project that they want to do, if you want us to move forward with this, uh, or it really affects, I think, just that one landowner, uh, that owned this here. All these here, where my arrow is, those are already in the city, because they're, they're north of the, the city limit line right here.
We also have that property to the west and to the east of this property, and this will have thirty-two acres of development, residential, single-family homes.
And if, you probably know, some of the south side, we're running out of building lots. Uh, I know there's some individuals that own land on the south side that maybe someday will, uh, want to develop it, but I've got nothing from them that they're, that's anything that needs the future. So what staff is doing, I believe, and they've really done a great job, bringing this to me, um, of thinking ahead and looking to the future, is this the area we want to develop? And as I said, council and mayor have decided it's important to pave this, this road right here, so this would be a part of that, as well as our acreage that we own here, and then, at some point, there'll be probably some further discussion on this, but, or he may bring us something, I don't know, but.
You have a timeline, so the area might happen. Go ahead, what? A timeline for when this might happen.
Well, so, um, fiscal year twenty-two is when we're gonna work on, uh, paving South Marion and West Park, so to give you an idea, if you remember, at the budget meeting, we asked to, uh, transfer a hundred thousand dollars from, uh, money that was, lack of a better word, left over from fiscal year twenty into a project account, so that we could begin work on this project. So we anticipate next fall, we would start, there'll be a bond that drops off after fiscal year twenty-two, is that correct, the last panel? So then we can use that without affecting any taxes, use that money to bond as well to pay for this project, so that, that process would begin in January, February of two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, probably work on that, start project on that in the spring or early summer of two thousand twenty-two. And majority of it will be paid for in fiscal year twenty-three, which would be after July first, two thousand twenty-two.
So what effect does it have on the old road for the school?
Well, uh, we're paying for it with a bond that's coming due.
Right.
So we're not raising anything. So we're not raising anything, uh, this school property road is a whole nother conversation that staff is working on, on how we're gonna pay for that.
So that's a separate issue.
It's a separate, yeah, it's separate, yeah, absolutely separate.
So my question is, if the annexation would not go through, because for some reason, we paved that road, and then that person that owns the property, we can't get together with, he decides to develop that, can we assess those?
Are you talking about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, you just hit the next bullet point that I had.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, you're good.
It's part of my assessment.
It's a very good question. I've had a conversation with Councilman Pickla, uh, chairman of the ED committee, about when we do this, assessing this road. And there's a certain value that we could, that we can consider, what the land's worth on doing that. So what that affects is there's two townhomes right here, four townhomes, two buildings that were put in with a variance, so there's, there's no payment in front of there, so it'd affect those two. It would affect the, the individual that owns this land right here and would affect this side, and then we're here, our land is here, so it'd affect that, so there's not a, a ton of land owners that it affects, but obviously they would be notified.
That would definitely increases that property value.
Absolutely, and I I think the decision for the elected officials is, we're gonna pay one point five million for this project. Do we want the property, I'm sure we're gonna benefit from this payment, sharing the cost of that. And I don't know, you can speak to the value, it's just a portion of the value, and if it's, if it's an empty lot, it's less than what a house would be. And it's up to twenty-five percent of the value of the property, so if it's made and bought, obviously, different than if there's a, a house built there, but it, it's just not along that street, if that annex area wasn't built, I I don't remember for sure, but it goes back a block or or so that you can assess as well. So as far as timing of the annexation, if council directed staff to move forward, then we would begin immediately on that. Knowing that we're gonna pave that road, uh, starting probably to work in fiscal, in fiscal year twenty-two, start, you know, next January, February, start the process for the bonding and everything. And work itself will begin before that, because we, you've given us that hundred thousand to transfer in the project, so Dan can start doing some work on it. Uh, as far as the assessment of the road, that would come as we start to develop, uh, you know, putting in this, the pavement in this road. And any further questions, I'd be glad, Jared, do you have a comment?
Yeah, we have uh forty-three, forty-two dollars in the budget for the study of that water main as well, make sure for the following year equipment.
Fiscal year twenty-two.
We have a budget provision.
Twenty-two, correct?
The question is.
Yeah, but we're not using it this year, yeah. Right, it's in this budget year, but we're not gonna use it till fiscal year twenty-two, because we put that project in that year, back, back year because of priorities at the water plant that we had to fund this year.
Any other motions?
Yeah, motion just to direct staff to move forward with possible annexation of what we discussed tonight in West Boone.
We can give direct staff to look forward to uh taxation in West Boone as we discuss tonight.
Call the roll.
Stucker? Yes, Brian?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Uh, and then just the one thing that's on the agenda, uh, city administrator Scare and director Kurt Phillips from the Chamber and County Economic Growth had a touring session with Dan Colhane and his people from A N C D C, and it was a good community tour and a lot of excitement and a lot of positive energy on tackling some things that we've been identifying for economic well-being in the community, so that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Department reports, William official, Ed Higgins, gentlemen, I am quick, Your Honor. Uh, I want to make mayor and council aware of notice that we sent to a property in downtown area about having a department on the first floor. Uh, if you recall about a year ago, another one in the past that did not allow, a twenty percent of the street side uh building on the first floor downtown of the apartments or the door rental units. Uh, we received a complaint on one that somebody just kind of moved in, they didn't, they did any work in there. So I, I set notice on it, um, they, I, I just give aware, being aware of what's going on and we got a couple weeks before the notices up, we'll follow up if they are combined, which one is it, we're uh, seven twenty-one, the story.
Hey, is the old P Hill?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Get him out. Thank you.
There you go.
Yep. Thank you, Ed. Uh, finance officer, Andrea?
Mike.
Uh, city attorney, Jeff?
No report.
Uh, director of public work?
No report.
Good job, Ed, the, yeah, it's all about, congratulations, thank you, Ed. Uh, city engineer, Dan?
No report.
Uh, public safety, Chief Adam?
Yes, Your Honor, just one item, uh, just letting council know that we did have a full-time firefighter resign uh to go to, leave to another department. Uh, we've had a civil service meeting to move forward to create a list to fill that vacancy left um behind with that firefighter and working with city administrator Scare.
As you know, I'm authorized to uh approve a replacement, this is not a new position, so I can give you approval to replace that position.
Thank you. Uh, chief Lebo?
No report.
Uh, number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately, if not any of them removed? Okay, follow the roll.
Brian?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Norman?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes.
Uh, number seven, there are no orders this evening, number eight, uh, no comments, and nine, any council comments? Okay, number ten, any public comments for items on our agenda? After this meeting is adjourned.